Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Loring?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk as was just demonstrated. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Our first item is a study session on the Wireless Ordinance and Design Standards Update Study Session, and we will be given information by J U, our Engineering Manager, and Jason Hilari, Senior Engineer. Gentlemen, over to you. Thank you so much.
All right. A little technical difficulties there. Good evening, Council. This study session, J U, Engineering Manager, Public Works Department, we will be seeking general direction in terms of the 2024 Wireless Small Cell Design Standard and Ordinance Update. Before we begin, I just want to note that we do have Jason Hilari, our Senior Engineer, here available for questions later on, as well as Trip May from Telecom Law Firm. So real quick, we'll be going over our questions in the beginning, but shortly after that, we'll be discussing the background, and then we'll be talking about our 2024 update approach. The bulk of the presentation will focus on the community feedback, and then we will talk about next steps, and then we will come back to the questions. So going straight into the questions, these questions are exactly the same in the AR report. We're not going to go through all of them right now because we will have plenty of time to do the discussion later on, but I do want to note that we have provided themes. So those are the sentences or words that are bold and underlined, and those are consolidated themes that represent multiple comments from the public. So how did we get here? Well, in 2018, the city received its first small cell applications. Shortly after that, in 2018 as well, we adopted our first wireless ordinance of 17.10 in our Muni code. And then 2019, a big FCC order called the Small Cell Order 18-133 was in effect, which ultimately started accelerating the deployment of broadband. And then in 2020, we started development of our wireless small cell design standards, and we need to update our ordinance as well. In 2021, that was adopted, and then since 2021 until now, three years have went by, we have had a lot of changes. One being laws and regulations. So for example, AB 965 batching and application requirements, that is now a thing. Industry standards have shifted as well since 2021, such as PG&E. There are metering self-certification processes, shrouding requirements for their poles, as well as other pole requirements, as well as a lot of lessons learned in three years for us and constructability challenges, understanding how our current review process can be optimized. So a result of all of this, we decided it's time for an update. So that's where we're at with the 2024 approach. It's very straightforward. We reached out to the community, we reached out to the industry, and we had a lot of different recommendations internally as well, and we also looked at other cities in terms of what they're doing. All of that input will ultimately result in the output of an updated design standards as well as the ordinance. So we're going to jump into the bulk of the presentation here, but before we do so, I want to note that there are two things to remember. We cannot adopt a regulation that effectively prohibits providers from providing service, and the city has no authority on health effects from RF emissions. I want to note that for the first one, in terms of effectively prohibiting, an example of that is we have heard from multiple avenues from the community, they want to outright not allow small cell facilities in residential areas. While we can't do that, we can explore other options, but I want to note that these are the two things, generally speaking, we cannot go into. So the outreach was robust in terms of community meetings. We had multiple virtual meetings, we had multiple in-person meetings as well. We received a lot of emails, and our staff behind the scenes has consolidated a lot of the emails into, you know, digestible pieces, and we received a lot of official letters as well in terms of how they want to see our current design standard and ordinance updated. And as you can imagine, this is a lot, and we want to be able to provide this to council in a digestible and bite-sized pieces. So what we did was, we broken them up into main themes, and at the left are the community and at the right is the industry. And the community really cared about nine big themes is what we saw from all the comments that we've seen, over 50, 60-plus comments that we have collected, and it results in gapping coverage, restrictions on residential land uses, appeal process, public notices and outreach, internal review process, definitions and clarity, required facility separation, post-construction, and poll options. The industry had six main themes, and most of them were technically related, conforming to regulations, but they are appeal process, conformance to other regulations, definitions and clarity, technical installation standards, poll options, as well as application requirements. You might notice a trend here, highlighted in green, that there are some that overlap, but I want to note that just because the industry didn't make a comment on a theme that the community had requested and vice versa, doesn't mean that they don't have opinion on the topic. They just don't have opinion on the topic from this comment period. Once we get our draft design standards and ordinance further in place, when there is a draft for review, both the community and the industry might comment on each other's main theme. So with that, let's just jump straight into the feedback. Gapping coverage was one that had a lot of feedback, and ultimately, the community wants the applicant to demonstrate that there is a significant gapping coverage in the application. An example of that is providing signal maps, speed test data, geographic distribution of wireless service, and data from a drive test. This is one where the industry did not provide a comment on. Next, restrictions in certain land uses. The community wants to impose specific restrictions in residential land use. Examples that were provided in the comment are setback requirements, special design guidelines for residential land uses. This is one where the industry did not provide a comment on as well. Next, the appeal process. The community wants to extend the appeal period and to place the burden of proof on the applicant. So example of that would be extending the current five-day appeal window to something longer and provide the burden of proof for appeals to the applicant. In summary, the industry wants to streamline the appeal process, so potentially switching the appeal body to a different entity. Currently, the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission does the appeals, and as council knows, that happens once a month, and sometimes if we're under the shot clock, it would be hard to schedule a meeting in between, a special meeting, to go ahead and come to a verdict and a decision within the shot clock period. Next, public notice and outreach. The community would like to make notifications more noticeable and in more languages, and also want to require mandatory public meetings. The industry did not provide comment on this theme. Next, definitions and clarity. This is one where we saw similarities between both parties. The community wants definitions for language that is critical in the application review process to be more defined. So an example of that is technically feasible. In our design standards currently, there's a lot of language of the facility needs to do this to the extent are technically feasible, and that's one that's challenging because how do you define that? It may vary from scenario to scenario, technology to technology. The industry would like us to remove subjectivity in the design standards, want more objectivity in how design standards are interpreted and applied. So similar to the community, they want more objectivity in regards to that. Next, require facility separation. The community wants to increase the separation between facilities. So an example we saw in the feedback is facilities cannot be closer than 250 feet of each other. The industry did not provide comment on this theme. Next, poll options. The community wants to restrict the number of poll options small cell facilities are allowed to be installed on. An example of this is do not allow wireless small cell facilities to be installed on city-owned streetlights. Right now, we do allow that if the applicant has a master license agreement with the city. The industry wants to expand poll options, so an example of that is to allow wireless small cell facilities to be installed on traffic signal poles. Next, post-construction. This is one where the community wants to require reoccurring monitoring of RF emissions after site is operational. An example of that is to have annual RF certification reports by the applicant and/or the city. The industry did not provide comments on this. Next, for city internal review process, the community would want more transparency on applications during the review process and more review oversight. An example of that is to get more technical experts onboard during the review process for the city side, as well as require the applicant to provide a hosting portal for applications. So that way, we can host all the, or we can post all the drafts of the application and decision notices that are in between from the beginning and to the end. The industry did not provide a comment on this theme. Next, installation standards. This is one the community did not provide feedback on, but the industry does want to soften up voltage drop requirements to reduce the amount of meter pedestal installed in the public right-of-way. An example of that is change the voltage drop requirement from three, which it currently is now, to 5%. Next, conformance with other regulations, one the community did not provide feedback on. The industry would like us to update our current design standards to be in conformance with the latest industry requirements and regulations. Examples are the FCC volume limits, PG&E requirements, and CPUC requirements. And lastly, application requirements. In summary, the community would like to place the burden on the applicant to demonstrate through the application process that there is a need for the facility, so a little bit more restrictive, if you will, and then on the industry side, to require less document and only submit what is legally required. So in summary, I know we went through a lot. There are 12 different buckets, and I want to just recap really fast in terms of the summary. What we've done here is we have a scale that starts at the left being more restrictive, meaning the opinions will mean we are currently going to require more from our current design standard and ordinance. Neutral means relatively speaking, our design standards are okay, and there isn't much of a comment, or they did not comment on the topic, and then less restrictive ultimately means there's less paperwork, they want to streamline the process. This is staff's interpretation of how we see all the comments and where they lie, but the community is represented in green, and the blue is the industry, and this is generally what we're looking at. The community, for the most part, wants things that are more restrictive, is what we're seeing. In terms of the industry, either they really didn't comment on the topic, or they feel like this is relatively on par, but for some of them, they want it to be less restrictive as well. What staff is seeing is because of the legal parameter, we're probably going to lie somewhere in the middle, and a good example of that is the appeal process. We've heard from the community that they want a longer appeal window, and the industry just wants to streamline the process. So if we can find a different entity to streamline the process, I think a longer appeal window is totally doable because ultimately, we are under the shot clock to review these applications. Another example is restrictions on residential land uses. That is one that we heard loud and clear from the community, that they just don't want them in residential areas, but we know from the beginning of the presentation, that is one that the law does not allow us to take. Now, are there other ways that we can go ahead and structure our ordinance and design standard to kind of meet in the middle, to make it maybe a little more restrictive? Yeah, we will explore that, but generally speaking, looking at the summary, this is what we're seeing from all the feedback in the last year. So next steps. We've been doing this for about a year now in terms of collecting feedback from the community, but we really had more in-person meetings as well as more engagement in this 2024 calendar year. We're currently in the study session, and in summer of 2024, we're planning to go to Sustainability Infrastructure Commission to present a draft updated design standard and ordinance. Shortly after that, sometime in late summer, maybe early fall, we will bring to council the introduction of the design standards and updated ordinance, and hopefully in fall, we will have the new design standards and ordinance adopted. So with that, here goes all 13 questions again, and I'm going to go through them just real quickly. One, conformance to other regulations. Do we want to comply with state mandate batch processing rules? Two, definitions and clarity. Do we want to explore objective design standards to make installations less intrusive? Three, the appeal process. Do we want to allow for hearing officers to consider appeals and extend the appeal timeframe from five to 10 days? Public notice and outreach. Do we want to make onsite notices of proposed facilities more visible and in more languages, and note that the public wants mandatory public meetings as well? Five, definitions and clarity. Revise the design standards to be more objective, such as adding a definition of technically infeasible, removing conflicting requirements, and clarify which standard applies to which design case. Require facility separation. Do we want to maintain the existing 250-foot separation requirement between freestanding poles? Seven, post-construction. Do we want to require applicants to submit an annual RF report for each installed facility? Eight, poll options. Do we want to expand poll options to reduce impacts on the public right-of-way, including more discretion to use freestanding poles when warranted? Nine, city internal review process. Do we want to explore to use third-party experts to exist with technical reviews? Installation standards. Explore options to reduce the number of meter pedestal in the public right-of-way. Number 11, conformance to other regulations. Amend the design guidelines to be consistent with other application regulations. And 12, application requirements. Revise application requirements to require all relevant information to be submitted as part of the permit application for transparency and to allow staff and the public to better understand the proposed and feasible alternatives. And then 13, appeal cost recovery. Do we want to adopt a fee to recover costs for appeal hearings as there is currently no such fee? So a lot going on there. That concludes the presentation. Thank you very much again, J U, Engineering Manager, Public Works, and I just want to note again, Jason Hilari here, Senior Engineer, as well as Trip May is available for the discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, both of you, and everybody on the team who's, who's done a lot of work over several months to get us here and to try and make it more digestible, not only for the council, but for the public, which is what's most important. So why don't we go to public comment now?
Yes, Madam Mayor. If you haven't done so already and you wish to speak on this item, please provide me with a yellow request to speak slip. If you're attending remotely and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. We'll give you a couple of minutes to do so. That's everyone. So through the mayor, we have a total of 14 requests to speak, 15 requests to speak, and one request for an organized presentation. So per our council guidelines, we currently provide for between 1 to 10 speakers is three minutes, 11 to 20 is two minutes, and 21 to 30 speakers is one minute. So we look for direction from the council.
So two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So when I call your name, if you could please line up against the wall here, that will help us. So I'll call the names of the first three speakers, and our last speaker on this item will be Laura Watanuki, and our first three speakers will be Sandra Dillon, followed by Mike Dillon and April McNair. One second.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having this session, which I feel is very important. What I'd like to talk about is I know the council has used my tax dollars to have many analysis done, many contractors paid for so you could learn more about a subject. I would like to request the council to consider giving money toward our lawyer, our person that knows all about this, Ariel Strauss. Right now, we're paying out of pocket, and I feel that I pay my taxes, and to pay out of pocket for this help, I don't think is fair. I think the council should pony up some money so that we can have Ariel Strauss, his wages taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mike Dillon, followed by April McNair and Kelly Rierson.
Hello, my name is Mike Dillon, and I'd like to say that I know, of course, what the industry wants. The industry wants to make as much money as it can. That's what the minute industry wants. Do we really need this, or do we already have it? It's all so dangerous. We're getting a lot of, we're getting a lot of reports that how dangerous this is, how this is not good for you, it's not good for your children, and we already have everything we need at home. So what I'd like to say is let's look at it really hard, and there's a lot of other cities out there that for some reason, they don't have any of these, or if they do, it's in the middle of nowhere, but not in the middle of mom and dad's house, or Joe's house, or Bill's house, or where the little kids are. Having it right in the middle of a district like that is really dangerous, dangerous. Now, you guys are working for us, and we work with you, and I know how, I know what they want, and what they want to do is make as much money as they can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be April McNair, followed by Kelly Rierson and Crystal Garcia.
Hello, and thanks for letting us speak. My name is April McNeil.
Thank you.
I am a stage three cancer survivor. My concern is that the cell box directly across from my home, less than 70 feet from my front door, I feel that my health can be jeopardized again with the RF emissions, and that's my concern. It's way too close. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kelly Rierson, followed by Crystal Garcia and Irina Mavridis.
Hi. Thank you first, J, because that was a lot of work. That was a really comprehensive presentation, so thank you so much for that. So I emailed you guys earlier, the council, but I just wanted to rehash a story that I just got back from Washington DC, where I met the city council from Huntington Beach, and I started talking to them about what was going on in San Mateo, and they said, oh, you just need to tell the city council, don't be afraid, you push back and they back up. And I thought that was really interesting, and it turned out that the mayor herself, when a facility was going to go next to a school, she said, that's not going to happen, these kids are not going to get cancer, put herself physically in front of the clearing equipment and said, you're going to have to roll over me to do it. And they backed up, AT&amp;T backed up, and there was no lawsuit, things were changed. Now, if you look at the map of Huntington Beach, you can see that they've placed the 5G facilities, but on main roads, nothing next to houses. So just to use an example, that is something that can somehow be done, and it'd be interesting to ask them exactly how they pulled that off. I think it's because they had some major courage. Second, when I was in DC, I also met a staffer, it was a Republican staffer of a congressman, and his full-time job right now is to try to make it so that NEPA is not, you don't, you won't have to follow NEPA in order to install 5G facilities, because the installations are being held up because of all these NEPA complaints that the towers are, are not in good standing with it, and I just wanted to point out, we have, I think, I don't know how many, 200 NEPA complaints filed, sitting with the FCC right now, that we think those analyses need to be done. And clearly, they know that they need to be done, or else they wouldn't be having the staffer come and try and put through policy to make them, you know, not important. And finally, we as San Mateo are bellwethers. They are very sure at the FCC that what happens here is likely to happen all over the place. Let's set a good example. There is still pressure, and please listen to what Ariel Strauss has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Crystal Garcia, followed by Irina Mavridis, and then we will move into our organized presentation from Ariel Strauss.
Thank you. Thank you again for that presentation. It was very concise, but it was interesting that they didn't show that there was a gap in coverage, which really concerns me because I don't know why these are being put up if they're not showing us that there is a gap in coverage. I believe our city has the strength and determination to stand up to these entities, ensuring that decisions regarding our infrastructure are made with careful consideration for the long-term welfare of our community, and I urge the council to take cautious approach and prioritize public health and safety, and consider alternatives or further research before moving forward with the installation of 5G small cell towers. I would also like to address the legal fees of Ariel Strauss, whose contributions to our city have been invaluable through his unbiased 5G education, a better understanding of our rights, and legal ordinances that can protect our citizens. His insights, research, and advocacy have not only enriched our understanding, but have also led to tangible improvements. Given Mrs. Strauss's integral role in our city's development, I strongly urge the council to consider covering his fees. By providing financial assistance for legal representation, we are not only honoring Mr. Strauss's contributions, but also upholding the principles of fairness and support to all our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Irina Mavridis, followed by the organized presentation, and Diana Reyes Dominguez.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Mayor. What has been reported back to me from conversations from Ariel Strauss, the city attorney, and the outside attorney, Trip May, is that they agreed that legally, there is nothing stopping the city from adopting our recommendations. However, Ariel Strauss has looked over the staff report and told me he's surprised to see that the portion that actually distills, or staff wants the city council to provide input and steers how they expect this workshop tonight to go, specifically the 13 items in the feedback requested from city council section, excludes what we have repeatedly explained to be the most important, and that is exercising maximum local authority to restrict antennas and facility growth near residences. We also emphasize the importance of interrogating the actual service to be provided, gaining understanding of the overall planned rollout to meet that objective, and forcing consideration of feasibility of alternatives. These are all things that the city attorneys agreed were doable, yet it's only hinted at in bullet point 12. So the 12 listed issues framed by staff excludes what the community cares about the most, which is specifically exercising maximum local authority to restrict these antennas and facility growth near residences. We're not asking to prohibit them, we're asking to restrict them under the maximum allowances and protections under the laws. We want to know our elected officials here tonight are doing the best in their ability to minimize these facilities in residential areas, and the conclusion from the staff report does not align with this. Staff has not done what to show the priority to explore what the public actually wants. If you're asking for an explanation of why San Mateo cannot go as far as Encinitas, this definitely does not do that. We want you to do your utmost to protect the residents. You may not be able to legally argue against current FCC levels, but you absolutely can take the host of peer-reviewed scientific data into consideration. Please look again carefully at the Encinitas ordinance and see what can be applied here to best serve the needs of the residents and not the needs of the telecom industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now move into our organized presentation. I will call upon Ariel Strauss. Ariel, I am going to promote you. Ariel, I am going to promote you. I'm going to take comments in the order that they were received, so Ariel, you will accept the request to enable your camera, there you go.
Hi, good evening, am I coming in okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for making the time, I'm very pleased to be here tonight, and I'm glad that you are all taking the time for a presentation to understand this issue. Now, what we heard tonight correctly is what the public wants. And I wanted to point out that it's not, doesn't make sense to balance what the public wants against what the industry wants. Obviously, I would understand that the council represents the residents, not the industry. You want feedback from industry, you want to understand what their design parameters are, what their concerns are, what their threats may be, but you represent the public, obviously. And so the goal here is to create the best policy for your city. As long as you have outs, that's to say overrides, you will never be in a position of having effective prohibition. And I agree with what Irina said. Basically, the attorneys all are more or less in agreement about what's possible, what's lawful. There's not that much room for disagreement so far in the three or so meetings, or four meetings I've had with the city attorney's office and with Trip May. And I'm very pleased you've involved Trip May, because in 2020, I represented a group in Encinitas, where Trip was outside counsel for the city, and developed a very good ordinance, an ordinance that goes, I mean, more accurately, a design policy that goes much further than what it seems like staff is proposing here. And so I'm slightly concerned that while the presentation is very comprehensive, it brings together a lot of important data, what it doesn't do is present before the city council the option that all the members of the public who spoke say they want, which is your dedication, your effort to maximize those restrictions around residential areas. Those areas are most likely to have the impact on the visual experience people in their home, the impact on property values, and also something that's critical to remember is that once you build that site, federal law dictates it can go up another 10 feet if it's a small cell. As long as not totally hidden, not totally camouflaged, look like something, not like a small cell, federal law entitles the applicant to build it up, regardless of your zoning standards, regardless of the height limits, regardless of all your care to position it in the most sensible spot, that's all out the window. So you have a lot of discretion at the front end, but you have very little once it's there. So it's very important that you recognize this, it's very unique, I don't think there's anything else like this in the zoning space, where once it's in there, it can just flower and grow and metastasize and do its own thing. That's not how it typically works, that's not how anything else works, and these permits are for 10 years. So it's critical that you try your best to get it right at the front end. Now, there are a couple of elements to doing that. The first is, in those 13 questions, one should be, how do you maximally restrict facilities in areas where people don't want them? There should be some discussion, I think, with the public, how do you identify those areas? But the notion that the council will be committed to saying, we want to give maximum power to limit those facilities in places where we think they traditionally have not been allowed, that is a very appropriate policy direction, and I think it will help very much move forward in a way that will develop a policy and a plan that will meet the public's understanding that you have limited power, but that you are working for the public. Now, there's another piece to this that I think is very important, which is making sure that you have an outside expert, an expert that can interrogate those obtuse and often false maps that don't tell you anything about real coverage, those so-called coverage maps, and look at the real data to understand what the service objective is, and identify what alternatives exist, all the alternatives that may exist, so that you can optimize those applications to put them in places where they provide meaningful service, and avoid putting them in places where they do not. And also strongly recommend an ad hoc committee, where some city council members too, who are interested in this issue, stay abreast of it and keep engaged so that the process can continue to involve elected officials. Now, I think it's really would be appropriate also to make sure that you speak with Trip May, to understand some of what I'm saying, that I think you're here, that really, it's worthwhile to impose restrictions. You can optimize the outcomes you have. When you don't force the applicants to prove that they're doing their utmost, they simply don't, they have no reason to, their shareholders don't want them to, their engineers don't want them to, nobody wants them to, only you do and only the public does. So I think that if you would speak with Trip May, if you check what I'm saying you're here, that you have a lot of options, you can impose those restrictions, and the public will thank you, even if on occasion, the site gets built. What you don't see is how often the applicant does police themselves, to pick those more intelligent sites, those less intrusive sites, those less harmful sites. And you won't know unless you push it to the limit as much as you can, so that you represent your constituents in setting standards that demand the highest and best quality facilities.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Diana Rios Dominguez, followed by Vikash and John Connolly.
Oh, sure, no problem. Thank you, Ariel, for your time, and thank you also for city council for always showing up. I know some of you are tired and it's, you know, it's late, but you're always showing up for us. I want to use these two minutes and first say, please hear us, please hear Ariel, please be there for us, help us, we need your help, and I appreciate everything you do. Okay, I was looking at a property in San Mateo on Ventura, it's beautiful, and I was walking the street and I saw a big tower, and I thought, oh, big brown tower, who do I call to see if it's active? Do I call, like, the city? And I was like, okay, one, next time we go to one of our meetings, I'll ask. But I called Verizon, and they said, yes, it's active, so I was like, okay, well, you can call Verizon to check on that. But I feel like there should be more information, maybe we can come to our city to check where they're located, if they're active, like, who do we call? If I want to know before I put, you know, 270,000 down on that house, I want to see if it's active, or 700, whatever it is these days. So that was just something that I definitely didn't buy the property, it was 500 feet from there, so. I know a lot of my buyers too, if they see a 4G tower or an electrical tower, they're turned off, right? They will pass on that, and they'll go to another property, so it does affect values as well. It's important that we take that into account. That's how we grow our generational wealth, right? The other thing is that I know it may be hard to change everything that's in motion now, it might take work, but do what it takes if it's going to protect us. As uncomfortable, costly, timely, stressful, you feel like you're taking steps back, if it's going to save us, protect us, you're going to hear us out, I think that that's the legacy you want to leave behind taking positions like these.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Vikash, followed by John Connolly and Virginia Wall.
Good evening, council members. First and foremost, I wanted to find out, I still haven't heard back from anyone on the clarification between non-thermal and thermal effects in terms of health. People keep saying it's both, but the law, from what I've read, has said that it's only the thermal effects, and so I need some feedback from the city attorney, and we need to know that for clarity. Now, what I wanted to tell you about is a quick story. It reminds me of a time about 20 years ago when I was in grad school in Dallas, and we were studying the dichotomy between aging and cancer. And what we were studying are the ends of your chromosomes called telomeres, means the ends. Telomere means the place, which is the end of your chromosomes. When those things open up, they shorten, and that's, that's our replicometer for how we age. So as your telomeres get short, as we get older, our telomeres short, so a baby has long telomeres, someone older does not, they have shorter telomeres. That can actually result in age-related diseases, okay? And so what we also know is various types of radiation, including RF emissions, contributes to these factors. We're already surrounded by many pollution and foods that have preservatives and things. The last thing we want to do is increase the risk, accelerate the aging process. This happens, this has been proven, this happens in the cells, we can shorten telomeres with RF emissions if we want to, especially high wave, high energy, okay? This is not ionizing, this is not DNA damage, this is uncapping of telomeres, this is modulating mitochondria, uncapping telomeres, okay? And so one of the things I want you to take home is that if you accelerate aging in your residential communities, you're going to have more age-related diseases, and that's going to burden your healthcare system as well. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John Connolly, followed by Virginia Wall and Nancy Cusari.
Good evening, mayor and council members. John Connolly, I'm at 732 10th Avenue, I've been in San Mateo for seven years now, born and raised in Half Moon Bay, didn't go too far, my wife, born and raised in San Mateo, we're still here. We love it here. We've felt safe here, we've felt safe raising our two beautiful girls, six and three, Grace and Isabelle. However, we're starting to lose those feelings, and we're starting to feel that we're not going to be able to stay here. And the reason is, one of these cell units is 20 or 25 feet outside the girl's bedroom window, and now we're starting to have those conversations at the dinner table as to, what if, what if the city doesn't step up and block new cell units, and what if they don't remove the existing ones, and what if they do turn this one on? And we just don't really see a way out of it, and I'm just, if I'm having these feelings, I would imagine that other families are having these feelings. And when we go through the needs and the wants of the community versus the industry, I find it hard to believe that the, that the community wants longer appeal processes. I would guess that the community doesn't want these cell units in front of their homes. I'd be very surprised. So you've heard my pitch before, and it's the same one. We like the city, but we feel like we may be getting bulldozed by the industry, and I encourage you to engage with Ariel Strauss, he's an expert, he's on the Zoom call, there's a lot of questions. I'm not an expert, I don't think any of us are, maybe Mr. McTaggart, however, I encourage you to engage with Ariel right now while we have him. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Virginia, followed by Nancy and Michael Maslowski.
Thank you, guys, for all your work. My name's Virginia Wake, we've had three generations of San Mateo residents, my kids are now in Washington. Been here for 40 years, myself, and then our, our parents were here and such, so we've been here a long, long time. I am hoping that through all of this stuff, that you guys don't give some other agency the, the authorities to make these decisions, or to come up with a bullet of yes, no, yes, no, just approve this. I want you guys to keep it. So I want you guys to keep the authority, keep as much authority as you can, and then follow, follow whatever happens after that. But please, 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 keep your authority, don't give it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Nancy, followed by Michael, and our last speaker will be Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Cusari, I live in Shoreview. I have all these notes, what to say. So my thought is here, I'm not just speaking to the council members, I'm speaking to the people who work here, and not, maybe you don't live here, but you work here. So it's, even though maybe you live, you get to be in neighborhoods that don't have any small cell issues, lucky you, but regardless, we are, it is us, we are, it's not us against you, we are all us, we are all one, and we should all care about, care about your health, even though I might not agree with some of the things you were saying. So I hope that you, taking consideration to maximize restrictions in residential areas, because it is quite frightening. I went around my neighborhood with another gentleman here, there's, to the 15 in Shoreview alone, and people were astounded when we told them about the towers and the potential damage to their health. And I encourage you to also support paying for Ariel Strauss. I get good advice.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael, followed by Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, council, thank you for your time. So in March, I received one of these letters, a notice that a tower was going to be built within 500 feet of my apartment, and unlike much of the crowd here, I actually was very excited for that. This is because, right now with my current network, I pay about $70 for seven megabits of upload and 200 download, which is a very poor quality internet connection. So this small cell infrastructure will give me the opportunity to be able to purchase a much better network plan for a lot cheaper, and a lot of other residents of this city will be able to do the same, who might be paying too much for their current plans. And I'm very happy that we're building these towers, because, you know, I come from a background of electrical engineering, where I understand how the technology works, and know that there is really no health risks related to this. It is non-polarizing radiation, it does not affect you after a certain propagation distance, and we are well beyond the propagation distance for it to have any impact on people, especially when it has to permeate through a home. So really, we have a, what to me is a small crowd of people who don't represent the whole city here today, trying to push the council to spend money on fighting this, and if they would like to do so, they are free to pay for that service themselves, and I support the council, using the money that they provide to pay for that lawyer to fight against this, if that is what the residents desire, and they get that kind of money to do so. But if that is not the case, I just don't find this a very valuable use of council money or time, to be fighting this, as it is really a net benefit to the people of San Mateo. Many might not know that the benefit will come until they're able to purchase those cheaper network plans, but, you know, better cell infrastructure is just better society for everyone here. So thank you for your time.
All right, we, we do not allow for any cheering or jeering, it can put a chill on public comment, so thank you for your cooperation with that. And as was announced earlier, our last speaker on this item will be Laura Watanuki. Laura, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, city council members, my name is Laura, Lori Watanuki, I'm in the central neighborhood. We did a neighborhood walk when these installations were first going in, and we were told that the small cell reception could be impacted by tall buildings in the surrounding area. I am concerned that we could have an over-concentration along South Amphlett, impacting residents already living in the area, between Fifth and Ninth and 10th through Folkstone. Although it is deemed manufacturing, we do have residents who live parallel to this area, and I am concerned about the over-concentration. We have one cell facility at Seventh and, I believe, Amphlett and Seventh Avenue, which has seven cells on this one rooftop, and I am concerned when something like that happens. We have about 16 projects that are going to be coming into the downtown, and I'm wondering if these small cell facilities could be incorporated into their rooftops, and better fit into the design of their buildings. I do think it's important to monitor the RF emissions annually, and the neighborhood should be noticed if more cells are added to one address, such as at Amphlett and Seventh, and to send the notices to the neighborhood associations when this takes place, and to be, and to notify them on these 10-year renewals. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much to everyone in the public. I think we're about to have a very interesting discussion, and I really appreciate everybody's perspective and work till now, so I will close the public comment period and bring it back, and who would like to start with questions or comments? Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you, Jay, for the presentation, staff. I did have a, I guess I'll start with hopefully a clarifying question. In the presentation, you mentioned gap in coverage. We've heard some from the public on this as well. I was under the impression that this is not necessarily something a city could require from applicants any longer, and that most current applications are more for capacity than coverage. I do see in our current application form, there may be an opportunity to note whether a application is for coverage or capacity, but, you know, we've also heard requests to ask for more But, you know, we've also heard requests to ask for more comprehensive data. So can you maybe just talk on what staff's understanding on what we can ask for and maybe in the recommendations, what we plan to explore asking if anything new?
Yeah. Yeah, good question. So I'm going to go ahead and lead it off and I'll probably defer this to Trip May. But to our understanding, we can require a gap in coverage and we could define that how we see fit. But there are limitations in terms of what we are requiring and what our actual authority is. So for example, we can require them provide gap in coverage, but ultimately, if they provide it and there is no standard for what we're grading it on, we don't have the authority to go ahead and deny application for it. Now, again, I want to preface, we can require it, but that is the difference between not allowing an application because of gap in coverage versus not. And I want to defer that to Trip and to see if you have anything to add to that or explain it better. Trip, I think your mic is muted.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. My name is Trip May. Good evening, members of the city council and the commission. I am your outside counsel for telecommunications issues and helping staff along with questions kind of like these. And this is a good question to start out with because it is emblematic of a lot of the issues that go on with these kinds of facilities. The law changes rapidly. The law is not always clear. And so what you heard in the staff presentation was that there was a change in 2018 issued by the FCC that did a lot of things. And one of the things was is try to upset the significant gap test. That test was whether there was a quote unquote significant gap. And there's a myriad of factors that could go into whether that's an actual significant gap, but there isn't a bright line test for it. And the FCC tried to superimpose a materially inhibit test. It's not whether you're preventing the carrier from closing a significant gap, it's whether you're materially inhibiting their ability to provide a service on competitively neutral and fair and reasonable terms. Nobody knows what any of these terms really mean. And in practical matters, when you go to litigation, both sides tend to argue both tests. So as a, like position that the city should take, they should ask all the questions, right? Whether the gap is significant using the traditional factors? Does it affect a thoroughfare, a major residential area, a hospital? Is it de minimis or is it really significant, meaning people will literally lose all their ability to reach 911 services? They should also ask the questions related to whether this is a materially inhibiting factor, right? Are there other options available to the carrier to achieve their technical objectives? And that gets into the next layer, which is what are your technical objectives? So you can ask all of these questions. And at this point in time, you should be asking all of these questions in order to determine whether, you know, the facility is really necessary in this particular location or if it could be better served with, or at least the same level of service for the carrier in a more preferred location for the city. There is one category of facilities that you cannot require this information for, and those are called eligible facilities requests. And some of the public comments touched on this when they talked about existing facilities being modified later. So under this particular category that the FCC and Congress has created, if the existing facility is going to be modified within certain parameters, all we can look at is whether those parameters are met. We can't ask about whether they need it or not. It's just about whether it's not too tall, not too wide, not too much equipment, not defeating the existing concealment elements, but it's not about whether they need it or not. So the application process would make that kind of distinction.
Thank you. I, we, on this idea of annual RF reporting, we did get a letter today claiming that asking for annual RF reporting would be considered federal preemption. Crown Council versus City of Cowabasas was cited as evidence. Does staff happen to have a response yet to this? Do staff see things differently?
I'll chime in before tossing it to Trip May. So yes, we did receive a letter representing Verizon, just briefly asserting that an annual report is impermissible. I think we share like a different view of the preemption argument in that I think the city can require periodic reviews to ensure RF compliance. And the case that they cite too, it's a trial court case, it's not binding on the rest of California, it's binding on the parties of the case and no more. So I'll leave it there and then turn it to Trip to see if he has additional comments.
Yeah, I agree with the city attorney's analysis. This was a superior court case, so not federal. And it was unreported, so the presidential value is low. And if you read the case closely, for me, I disagree with the way the analysis was borne out because the court didn't go deep enough into what the FCC has said before. And what they've said before is that the cities can do as much to enforce the RF compliance regulations as the FCC would do themselves. So there may be situations in which compliance evaluations could be required on a periodic basis. They're probably rare, but it's not totally outside of the bounds. The most important thing to do is to look at what the FCC would do when enforcing their own rules and decide, are we doing more than what the FCC would do? Or are we right there at the limit? And if you're right there at the limit, you're still inside bounds.
Thank you. I did want to ask about polls. As you noted, we got some public input mainly on at least highlighting perhaps reducing or restricting outright our use of city-owned streetlights. We got some industry input indicating that they would be interested in other types of polls, like traffic lights. So I'd like to maybe ask, Jay, if you could just talk a little more through, you know, staff's current feelings on those ideas? Is the city interested in potentially expanding to, or rather, you know, is, is some, expanding into something like traffic lights, you know, feasibly on the table? I'll leave it there.
Yeah, so the comments that we received from the public is that they ultimately don't want them on our city streetlights. We're seeking direction tonight, but if that is to occur, the industry does have the option of doing freestanding poles. So they can go ahead and install a new pole in our public right-of-way. Obviously, there's a set of criteria we will go through in terms of reviewing it, but assuming they follow the application process and all checks well, there will be a new freestanding pole in our public right-of-way. Previously in our design standard, our position is we want to keep the right-of-way as clear as possible. So one of the industry's recommendation is, you know, after discussion and multiple rounds of review is potentially opening them up to other city assets such as traffic signals. It fits the aesthetic feel in terms of how an antenna would look like, and they tend to be at intersections. So it's an area of good coverage that could potentially have a broad effective range, if you will, and they're relatively high as well in terms of its mounting point. So that's where we were thinking about in terms of limiting the public impact or in the right-of-way, but using existing assets.
Thank you. I have a number of other questions, but I imagine council members have their own questions. So with the mayor's permission, I may defer to others, but if I, if there's time, perhaps I can chime in with any questions that might have not been asked.
I think that's a great idea. And before we go on, I just wanted to ask the council, apparently Ariel Strauss, the outside attorney who we heard on Zoom, has a question that he would like to ask, but I wanted to get the council's feeling. It would be fine with me if he wanted to ask that.
Through the mayor. So you certainly can call on a third party, someone who had provided some testimony. If you have, if you have questions for them, less, it's less typical to have a third party ask questions of the council. But I mean, if you want to have that dialogue with Mr. Strauss, you know, I think that's fine.
Well, I guess my, I'm asking the council. thank you for that. And why don't we try and do the one question and keep it focused?
Ariel, you should not be able to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually wanted to, sorry, my camera's not coming on correctly, but nevertheless, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I actually, not so much a question as much as just to an observation, which I think is rare, that there's actually so much agreement on the legal side. You know, I couldn't agree more with Trip May about his answer on the issue of effective prohibition. I truly want to have a question of, in what situations, I believe, the council wants to demand that level of proof, or that level of documentation? Are there certain areas where the council believes from a policy standpoint and keeping with the interests of the public and their goals, that there should be an effort to prevent them such that the applicant has to prove whatever the highest federal allowable standard is? And so I think it's less a question of disagreement that I would have with things that Trip May said, but rather just to focus that right now, the policy as it exists doesn't demand this type of proof from the standpoint of selecting locations. And so the change that would be, make this question relevant and live would be are there certain areas proximous to residences or the like where you want to bring your demands in line with as far as you can go under federal law? And I think the answer from a public standpoint is, would be yes. But I just want to point out that I don't think it's really any disagreement that I would have and that, from my standpoint, how, it's really a question of how do you have the technical expertise to ask those questions and get information back efficiently in a way that's probably not possible to do just from conventional staff that you have in-house? And that would be bringing in outside experts that would be then charged to the applicants in those instances where you want to ask that question.
Through the mayor.
Thank you.
If I may, so I will comment that, you know, Mr. Strauss and I and the lawyer group, we have had positive conversations, largely in agreement on, on the law. And, you know, I think that's been very helpful to advance this discussion a little more behind the scenes, but I think it bodes well for future legislative effort for the ordinance and the design standards. However, third parties like don't engage in deliberation with the council. It's if you have a focused question for, say, in a land use context, a developer, you know, that, that can happen sometimes. There is a public comment time and then the public comment is over. So if you had a specific question for Mr. Strauss or Mr. May or somebody else, I think that's fine. But I also want to make it clear that this is the time for council deliberation, not the time for deliberation between the council and other parties.
Fair enough. Yes, please.
Yeah, I, while I really appreciate having an open public comment period, and it's really important and valuable to process, maintaining our process is also paramount. And, and I feel really uncomfortable with, with the direction that this process has, has gone into. We are, we're way out of bounds. We're at this point really out of order in terms of the norms for a public process. And so I want to make it clear, as, you know, it's the most senior person on this council, I've never seen this kind of deliberation before. And I don't think that it's wise for us to set ourselves up to bastardize our own processes that protect us, protect democracy, protect public process. And, and so I really hope that we can stay within the bounds of norms and protocol.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee, and thank you, city attorney. Who else would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. When I found about the five-day appeal period, I was a little concerned because in all the negative declarations I get, it's 10-day period for people to file an appeal. So is there any particular reason why it's five days versus what we do the rest of the
I don't have all the history on how this was previously set up, but I do know, and looking at some of the notes internally, that it had to do with the shot clock. Obviously, if we are limited in resource at the time this was developed, or original design standard ordinance in 2021, if our staff capabilities were not able to meet our current shot clock, maybe the window for appeals is shortened because the determination for an appeal actually lies within the shot clock as well. So we have to be able to make a decision in that period. But that's the most information I have.
Thank you. And actually, the shot clock is one of my, involves one of my other questions. So I'm very concerned because I've seen this happen with the county on appeals for property tax. What can we do with this shot clock to stop the, the company from dumping so many of these applications on us at one time that many of them we can't get to and they automatically go into effect? Can we limit the amount they can do at one time?
I'm going to defer that one to Trip.
Thank you. Yep. So the answer is you can, there are tools in the box for order, ordering the inflow of applications. But in terms of limiting the number of applications that can come in at one time, the tools are getting much more narrow. So effective January 1st of this year, the state legislature adopted a new statute that requires us to accept up to 25 applications in a single batch under a single permit. All of those applications have to be virtually identical, is the language used in the statute, which leaves a lot of room for interpretation. But having a robust intake process and delegating a lot of authority to the department in order to determine how to order that process, whether it be by appointments or by having pre-application meetings or by scheduling office hours where people can bring those applications in. The key is to make sure that you be able to make sure you see the applications come in when they do, identify which regulatory bucket they fall into, tag the shot clock that's applicable to them, and then process them accordingly. And organize the workflow according to how, how quickly you need to process those applications. So there, there are things that you can do. Unfortunately, limiting the number of applications while possible is probably not what you'd like to hear. Twenty-five is, is quite a lot. But at the same time, empowering your staff gives you a lot of ability to make sure that they stay on top of those deadlines, that they make sure that nothing falls between the cracks. Something else that the council and the commission can do is adopt policies for automatic conditions of approval. So we assume that there will always be problems. Something bad will happen. A project will fall through the crack, somebody's sick, they're not, they're not at work that day, an application comes in and all of a sudden it's deemed approved. That's the worst-case scenario, but hedging against that could be making sure that at a minimum, when that application is deemed approved by the operation of law, it is subject to all the same conditions that it would have been subject to if it was affirmatively approved by the city. So there are tools, but there are limitations on what you can and cannot do.
Thank you. I think that's it for now.
For now, okay. Who else has some questions? Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I have a question for, for legal counsel, whoever, or both. And, you know, I, I hear from, you know, I think it's an, I, first of all, I want to say, Jay, you did a great job. The presentation was very thorough and, and it was very helpful, I think, to see
The presentation was very thorough and it was very helpful, I think, to see where the stakeholders are together or far apart in the, you know, in a visual way. And I heed the point that, you know, at the end of the day, council is here to serve the entire community and the residents' perspective and maintain this community and its health is one of the highest callings of service. And so I wanted to, I guess I wanted to understand, you know, what happens? Because, you know, we've heard from, we've heard some perspectives that really there's no repercussions if council takes the most restrictive approach. And then I think on the other hand, there's, you know, ambiguity in the law and there's, you know, a sort of untested areas. And we are custodians of the organization and our city budget and our very scarce resources. We're looking at a budget shortfall. Liability and opening up the city to liability is a very grave concern from the perspective of ourselves as custodians of the taxpayer money, right? And so I would hope and I would ask that you could shed some light in terms of what are the risks as you see them in terms of going too far? How close can we be advised to get to the line of without stepping over the line and exposing ourselves to lawsuits?
Sure. And so I'll start and then I'll ask Trip to chime in. So first, there's a couple of categories, you know, legislatively and also on a permit by permit basis. So just take on a permit by permit basis, if there is a denial of a permit that was, let's just say, was in violation of federal law, you know, then if the city got sued, true that the city would not be subject to attorney's fees or damages, but still, that's not a reason to engage in that practice. The city has to follow federal law, has to process permits procedurally and, you know, in a timely way and not consider things that are out of bounds under federal law, even if the financial consequences of that decision are different than it would be in, say, other situations where the city would be subject to attorney's fees. So that's number one. And then also just on the legislative part more generally, sure, now there are some things that the city can do to be restrictive in terms of, you know, how it prefers small cell facilities to be located in terms of different districts, some of which the city already has today. But I think a key point is what was mentioned earlier is even if the city were to become more restrictive, there needs to be an exception process so that if in a particular circumstance, failure to allow for a certain permit would violate the effective prohibition standard, for example, there needs to be a safety valve in any kind of legislative process. So some ordinances are structured that way, but regardless of how they're structured, they both stay on the side of the line that's compliant with federal law. They're just kind of framed a little differently, either as restrictive but with an exception or not as restrictive, but you may end up in the same place with the same pole, the same facility, the same location. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Trip May to see if he has any other comments. You're muted, Trip.
I'm sorry about that. I agree with the City Attorney. There are two basic considerations, you know, legislative and case by case. So in the parlance of lawyers, we call this like facial challenges versus as-applied challenges. And on a facial challenge basis, you just need to have that safety valve, the exception process that the City Attorney mentioned. Basically, something that gives you the ability to say, okay, even though we don't like this, if we are required to say yes by preemptive state or federal law, we've got a set of findings that we can make to say, in fact, we are required to say yes. And if we make those findings, then you can move along and therefore it passes legislative facial challenge muster. You won't get sued. And if you did, you prevail. On an as-applied basis, I think your question, Councilmember Lee, was really about resource allocation. And if I focus in on that particular point, the question becomes finding the hills you would like to die on. Maybe that's not the right turn of phrase, but it is about prioritization. Where are the places that you really want to hold everybody's feet to the fire? And not just the applicants, but staff, requiring them to do the highest level of work, take experts on a third-party basis into the fold, pay those fees, recover those fees to the extent possible, and make sure that you get all the information that you could possibly get before you say yes or no to one of those types of facilities? If you've got those kinds of applications clearly in mind, the next step is figuring out where are the applications that we are fine with, right? Are there designs in locations, on particular kinds of streets, or on particular kinds of structures, in particular kinds of zones, in particular kinds of concealment configurations that we think can make the findings for approval without resort to the exception process to relieve the burden of staff, burden on staff for going through that kind of very exhaustive analysis that we talked about before for every single facility? So a well-balanced type of approach to make sure that the city's limited resources are properly allocated is setting preferences and priorities. Say, there's this tranche of locations or types of facilities that we don't want to see and we won't say yes to them unless we absolutely have to. There's another tranche of facilities that we're not happy about, we're going to hold your feet to the fire and make sure you do everything we could possibly do to reduce the impact on our community, but it's not the worst it could possibly be. And then finally, also, finding a group of facilities, locations, designs, concealment configurations that you want to encourage, right, to reduce the burden on staff and make sure that you not just hit them on the applicant's side with a stick, but offer them a carrot.
Thank you. I really appreciate your explanation. And I think my follow-up to that would be to dig in, you know, a little bit deeper into the, you know, those 13 areas. Because I think, you know, while we might be forced to find out what hill we're going to die on, I think we all would agree that we want to, you know, work hard and smart. And, you know, being, you know, considering the organizational capacity and the staff capacity, I'm curious to hear from staff, what do you feel like are the key recommendations that are streamlining efficiencies and trying to, you know, thread that needle in terms of supporting what, you know, what the community is asking for, what industry is, you know, is still able to work with and what's within the law?
I think right now, we are consolidating a lot of the comments from the public. I think one is probably look into how we can have a more stringent requirement on gap in coverage. That's something that we're looking into. Obviously, finding the boundaries of where that would be. Another one, I think, is notifications. I think that's an area that's been brought up by the community as well as staff internally, that that's an area that we could definitely beef up. We're looking at that. In terms of the biggest one that we've been hearing as well is residential land use of where that's at, I think that's something that we're really going to have to talk with legal to see where that line's at. A lot of the different jurisdictions that we have been reviewing has a lot of the safety clauses, the exemptions, exceptions, sorry, that are built in there. But I think there is going to need to be a lot of direction of how much do we want to pursue that because applications right now are already in excess of 200-plus pages. And I think Crown Castle alone has close to 180 applications, multiple iterations for per application. And even though we do take a deposit from the applicant, staff does have to review that because ultimately, we can't rely 100% on third parties to make reviews. There has to be oversight. So you can do the math, right? 200-plus application, pages per application, hundreds, and that's just one applicant currently. Now, of course, there are ways around that, but I think between those three are things that we're really looking into in terms of direction.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. If I could just add just one thing, I think when it comes to the exceptions, if we were going to look at something like that, like Jay mentioned, we have looked at a variety of ordinances. And I think we would, as we embark on the drafting, go one step further and actually talk to the different cities and look at how many times they're using the exceptions. Because if you have a provision and then you find yourself always granting the exceptions to the provision, that's a lot of work, too. That's the same as processing the permit application. And it looks one way, but really the reality is something else. And so that's something that I think we would want to research and look at the level of resource intensity and look at the effectiveness of the ordinance provision itself. So we would have to report back on that.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor.
It's a great idea. Thanks. Couple of questions. I'll try to keep it brief and fast. So Jay, currently, do we have any, do we have any polls on anything other than PG&E polls? Like, do we have anything currently on streetlights?
Yes.
Okay. And are we looking at the feasibility of if we put them onto streetlights and, for example, street signal lights that would actually remove them or, you know, it greatly in the distance between them and homes? Is that a feasible model?
We haven't specifically modeled that, but in theory, that's the goal of expanding our poll options, is to move it away from areas that are near intersections, but they can't use the signal poles and they're probably using either existing streetlight pole or a PG&E share pole.
Okay. I think I heard, but just to reiterate with legal, we can require yearly RF reporting?
Yes, we believe we can have that requirement placed.
Okay. Another question, legal, as far as compliance, when these big waves have been coming in of notifications, we've had a lot of people actually show, you know, postcards that they're getting them, getting the postcards either right before or even in some cases after the notification period is up. So I see that right now we have a five-day notice. Do we have any way to actually enforce the compliance with that? Are we able to require the mailers to use informed delivery so they can show us that it was mailed, you know, giving five days proper notification?
Well, I think generally speaking, with notice, it's, you know, city staff, you know, provides the notice, you know, to the public, you know, of an impending application. I mean, does that answer your question, though?
Sort of. So are we the ones mailing on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah. So we provide a list, a parameter, that's defined in our guidelines, and they mail it out. We do require them to send us an affidavit that this is all mailed to the residents that we prescribed.
Okay. So I'm going to tighten this up a little, and I'm only doing this because I'm in the direct mail business. That's one of my jobs. We can require them for really no additional money to use informed delivery. We should require that because that would mean that they could then show us, like, you know, that everyone within notice got noticed within five days of the period closing. So I think that that's something we could fix and it would cost nothing, so we should put that in. What is the parameter, like, of notification around a pole?
It's a 500-feet radius.
Okay. So on average, how many houses is that? It's usually not very many, right?
I think it depends on the density and where it's proposed. I don't have that exact number, but it's 500 feet.
Okay. I should know this, but I don't, and I've heard different numbers. What is the minimum distance required for the pole to be from the residence?
We, I don't believe we have that minimum guidelines right now.
Okay. So I would like that to be defined and then, sorry, I'm not giving orders yet, I'm asking questions still, but I'll come back to that. But I would like to make sure that we have that defined, and if we find that people are within less than that, that we're figuring a way to cure that. Legal question again, we can ask for if there's a gap in service that's allowed?
Well, before I turn to that question, I just want to also explain a little further about the annual review. I mean, the annual review can be, I mean, different things. It could be like an annual certification that all of the facilities owned by a particular provider comply with our permissions requirements, not necessarily going out to each individual site. I mean, we'd have to explore that a little bit further.
Sure.
But then as far as the gap in service, I mean, Trip May had explained that a little bit earlier because, you know, there's Ninth Circuit case law, which is the Federal Appeals Court that covers California, that established the significant gap in service framework, which basically means if there's a significant gap in service and the provider is, applies for a facility that is the least intrusive means of filling that gap, then there's very limited discretion on the part of local governments to deny it. So that's on the one hand. But then, as you mentioned, in the FCC order from 2018, they made their own effort to establish a different standard, a materially inhibit standard. So what this means now is it's just a little unclear. And what happens is the local governments and the litigation, they, everyone argues both standards is what Trip was indicating. I also noticed that Trip had raised his hands, I want to give him an opportunity to speak.
Sure. Thanks, Trip.
That's right. Because, I'm sorry, pardon me, Councilmember Newsom, I just wanted to make a correction. It would not be my recommendation that you impose an annual compliance evaluation on every single facility. As I mentioned before, the city can do as much as the FCC would do to enforce their own rules, perhaps if they enforce them themselves, but they don't have an enforcement bureau that is broad enough to cover this. So they don't require annual reviews. What they do require is a certification that when there's a new facility or a change to an existing facility, including the addition of other carriers to the same structure that would have cumulative effects from different RF emitters, that they go through the same kind of review you would do for a new facility. So there may be circumstances where you could require periodic reviews if the FCC might do that on their own. Those circumstances would be very rare. That'd be situations where the emissions would be very close to places where people could access. And typically, carriers don't build those kinds of facilities because they don't want to go through that. So while it's on the table, it wouldn't be the kind of blanket requirement that you're talking about. I also wanted to make a note about notice. There's been a lot of discussion about the period of notice, how much notice people get, how long they have to respond to it. And I think Councilmember Newsom, you're exactly right that if we can require the carriers to provide the notice, we should, and a lot of cities do that. What they also do is require notice that notice is coming, right? Particularly when there are going to be decisions to be made and people would want to provide objections or comments either before or after a particular action was taken by the city. So there are all kinds of different permutations, and we can talk about how other cities have done that in the past, if you'd like to.
Got it. Thank you. Two small, more questions. They kind of go together, too, so I'll make it fast. It was mentioned that once a tower is installed, that they can go 10 feet higher. Who is responsible for that upkeep and that change? Does that then become the cellphone provider has to pay to adjust the pole or replace the pole?
Short answer is yes.
Okay. And is there a requirement or an allotment of how many towers can be on a single pole or how many facilities can be on a single pole? One of the speakers mentioned that, you know, there's a facility near Seventh that has, they said, they think, seven different towers on one pole. Is there a limitation to that?
Short answer is no, but the complete answer is yes, but it's based on the structural capacity of the pole to support that much equipment and the ability of all of those emitters in the same place to maintain compliance with the FCC's exposure rules for places that people could access around them. So when you've got multiple emitters in the same location, they magnify each other. And therefore, you would want to double-check to make sure that everybody was still being safe within the range of area that they could be exposed to those emissions outside the FCC's minimum.
So if there was a tower that already had an emitter from one provider and another provider puts it on there, it would be the new installations requirement to make sure that the combined effect of the multiple emitters is not raising the RF frequencies or emits, emissions, I guess? Is that the right way to say it?
Great question. The answer as a practical matter is yes, because the new addition to the tower has the reason for to the tower has the reason for wanting to maintain compliance and show that it'll be fine, to get the city's approval, also to maintain compliance with the FCC's rules. But under the FCC's existing regulations, everybody who has an antenna that contributes at least 5% to the maximum permissible exposure limit in any particular area has an obligation for mitigation if the exposure exceeds the maximum permissible. So really, everybody's responsible, but at the end of the day, it's the new applicant who bears the big burden.
Okay. Thank you very much for everyone's answers.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just chime in for one second? So I know you haven't provided your own comments yet, but I also want to be mindful of the time, and we have 13 different categories. There's some overlap by council members, so I want to make sure there's an adequate time for the council to provide input on the questions posed to the council.
You said my comment better than I could, City Attorney. Thank you very much. So Councilmember Lorraine, Councilmember Hedges, are there any really, really critical questions you have, or can we move on?
I have some comments.
Okay, great. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. So in the overall ecosystem of public comment we've received, there's, I think there's been some mentions today about prioritizing, or rather, you know, shielding residential areas, or perhaps, you know, treating them differently than other areas. Some suggestions that have been made to us, you know, the city along those lines have included making, you know, a certain distance around residential areas be considered a restricted site location in which applications can only be approved if they demonstrate federal preemption. We've kind of talked about things like this. Another, it was, you know, mentioned that the Encinitas ordinance and guidelines mentions, you know, has some language such as "the technically feasible location farthest from all residences will be deemed to be the most preferred alternative." Are any of the 13 suggestions from staff touching on these?
I think question 12 is really honing into that. That's, in essence, a way for us to ask as much from the applicant as possible, to have them demonstrate that their facility is something that they want or is needed here. So question 12, application requirement, would be one to speak on that.
Does that satisfy your question?
I will accept the answer and have no further critical questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And you have a critical question, Councilmember Hedges?
Yeah, one of the things we met with the FCC, and one of the questions was asked is if there's an appeal, after it's been approved, if there's an appeal, could we stop the work on it during the appeal? And the answer was no. And I'm wondering if the third-party attorney could answer that question to the best of his ability, if he agrees with that or not, because we're not in full agreement here among ourselves on what they told us.
Trip?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Trip.
The shot clock stops for only two things, or maybe three. Number one is incomplete applications. Number two is mutual agreement between the applicant and the city. And number three is probably just approval or denial, right, final action. And so, as a practical matter, the answer to your question is the appeal period must be included in the shot clock timeframe. So if you have 90 days from start to finish, accounting for any tolling that might be due to incomplete applications or for mutual extensions granted by the parties, you have to get it done within 90 days. Just because you have an appeal from a resident does not mean that the shot clock stops running. There has to be one of those three conditions: an incomplete application, a mutual tolling agreement, or a final action to get the shot clock to stop.
So in essence, then, they were correct.
I think that's right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
If I can rephrase, the councilmembers had just questioned a little bit. I mean, I think it's if you're in a situation where the shot clock has not yet run, you're still within the shot clock, and the appeal period is still, the appeal is going to be held within the shot clock, the applicant doesn't have the permit yet, so you're not in a situation where the applicant should have the ability to start construction. It really depends on the factual circumstances, if you're within the shot clock period, even during an appeal, or if you're outside of it. Trip, if you have any other comments there, feel free to chime in.
No, that's exactly right. I mean, the way the FCC phrases it is that cities and states and counties can do whatever they'd like within the timeframe that is allotted to them under the shot clock. So within that timeframe, you can hold an appeal if you'd like to. And so long as the shot clock is not expired, none of the other remedies are going to take effect, especially if the application's been approved or denied before that shot clock has been expired.
Okay. Great. I'll keep my questions to, given the timing. Number one, at this stage of the discussion, we're, you are asking us for general direction in terms of where on the policy scale we want to be, that the next steps would be to build out a policy, do a draft, to talk to people, get into the nitty-gritty. But right now, you're looking for generally where on the scale we want the policy to show up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, number two, is there any reason why it would not be a good idea to regularly consult an outside authority consultant about applications who had the technical knowledge, who could do the work as a way of trying to relieve staff efforts and time, and just have that be part of our process, maybe not for every application, but for ones that would seem to make sense?
Not that I can think of. We're currently going through that process as well for subject matters that we're not experts in. We are already looking for consultants to help with that.
Okay. So that could be something we could consider as general policy guidance.
Just one other piece that we have to consider is that we're limited on the amount of reimbursement or the fee that we can recover. And so when you think about third parties, you have to think about just the costs that are associated as well.
Sure. And that would be part of the deliberation, but the concept of having something be generally part of the process. Okay, thank you. So let's open it up to comments. Who would like to do first comment or recommendation? Okay. Councilmember Lorraine?
I'd like to cheat and see if I could have one more quick question.
Really fast.
It'll be so fast.
Okay.
Jay, could you, could you explain why multifamily residences on the scale of priorities are above single-family residences?
I don't know if I have an answer for that one. I don't know if that is the determination. Christina?
So I wasn't here for the drafting of the first two ordinances, but I very strongly suspect that it was just simply modeled after traditional zoning. And there is a hierarchy that goes from service commercial to commercial to multifamily to single-family. And in other jurisdictions where I have worked, when you look at siting for cell sites, the hierarchy is the same way in the order of preference. It goes from the least populated to the commercial, where there's fewer people, to where people live. And that multifamily and single-family, it just kind of goes that way, and it doesn't take into consideration where there are more people or fewer people. It's just kind of a zoning hierarchy that's been around for a long, long time. And my guess would be that it just kind of followed that, that sort of traditional way of looking at land use.
Does staff see issues with exploring, potentially consolidating multifamily and single-family into a residential block?
You could just say residential.
Thank you. Okay, I'll jump into comments. I mean, I think I can keep this quick. I think with regard to one through 13, I'm just going to say, I would say yes to the city exploring, amending the municipal code and design standards for all of them, except... With number six, I think I would say, you know, it's not, I would be interested in exploring flexibility within this 250 requirement, along the lines of, I think, what we're trying to get at with number eight. So I guess just on a higher level, I think that there's an opportunity to explore different pole options and different pole separation distances in service of potentially finding more suitable locations that are farther away from the bedrooms of residences. And then I'll just make a couple other quick comments related to that. To number 12, I appreciated when Trip mentioned that the city should ask all the questions. I do, though, also appreciate, I think, Councilmember Lee's questions, trying to get at more of a sweet spot of asking the best questions, the most important questions, the questions that will get the most bang for our buck in terms of bandwidth, staff, time, et cetera. I think Assistant City Manager Horstberger sort of touched on this as well. I think I just want to mention that, you know, I'm interested in reasonable levels of aesthetic controls over what goes into the public right-of-way. I think there's an opportunity for us to tighten up what we have a little more in that regard, and I would like us to explore that. I would like to see our design guidelines revised with input from the community, with input from industry stakeholders, in such a way that avoids prohibition or effective prohibition, and follows federal law. But where we have discretion, I would prefer that we err on the side of precaution and protecting residential neighborhoods where we can. I also want to make sure that we're giving Public Works and the City Attorney the resources they need to review these applications completely and enforce our design guidelines. So I appreciate number nine and number three, and the overall conversation I think we've had today about making sure that we're asking all the best questions, and we're able to get the answers what we need. And to number 12, having this be a transparent, accountable process. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who would like to comment next? Councilmember Hedges?
Yeah, first, I'd like to say that I have two of these towers on either side of where I live. I'm not, they're a little, I have a much wider street, they're a little distance from me, but still a little concerning. As far as this goes, I actually am going to go through it. I'm okay with number one. I think that to get outside that compliance would give us more problems than it would solve. I think we should definitely explore objective design standards to make installations less intrusive. The appeal process, I'm troubled here, because I'm looking at the shot clock, which you made very clear, that you did a good job with that. But I also know, because I got a notice, that first-class mail is not guaranteed the next day now, that even with first-class mail, when these go out, people may not receive them in a timely manner. So we have to find some balance to give people an ample chance to appeal and to also guard against going beyond the shot clock. So I would extend it from five days. I would leave it up to the staff for their comfort as how far we can go. I would go to 10 days if we thought we could do it. So I think that's important, because I don't want people to not be able to appeal because they had to go to their kids' event at school, they laid it down, didn't read it to the next day, it came late, and they're already by the limits.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just interject and just say that allowing for a hearing officer to hear an appeal may allow the appeal to be heard sooner than if it's SIC, and so as to stay within the shot clock. Just something to consider.
Okay.
And if I could just add to that really briefly, we are in the process of onboarding a consultant bench of hearing officers right now. It will actually be coming to you at the next council meeting.
That's great news.
We've already selected the hearing officers.
And we talked about that for other issues with the city, too, and I hope we're considering that.
And we've made, we've made their scope wide enough and flexible enough that we could add other services.
This is a big thank you from me. I think clarity is going to be important in design standards, to be more objective. And I would always err on these, because if for no other reason, the concerns people have, I visited one home where the pole was really virtually right next to a child's bedroom. I know if I were a parent, that would worry the heck out of me. So I would be more restrictive just to make the people in the neighborhood feel comfortable. And the 250-foot separation, I would like to go farther. If it's legally possible, as much as 500 feet. And I'm hearing that the radio frequency reporting annually may be very difficult and actually problems for us. I would like to keep that open, but maintain some objectiveness for the ability of the city to do it and what costs we might incur with it. Again, the pole options, none of our infrastructure, except for the traffic. I think this will, as I think Councilman Lorraine related to, that it may take some of the poles out of the neighborhoods if we can put them on traffic, traffic lights and other infrastructure on our corridors. And I've already heard about the third-party experts. Installation standards, floor options, reduce the number of metered pedestals. If we can do that, I would do it. I think, you know, technology may have something to do with it. And I think I'm okay with 11, 12. Appeal cost recovery, I don't have a problem with a small fee. I don't want it to be, I don't want anything that would stop somebody's feeling that they need to appeal this. And I would like to, Encinitas has been brought up several times tonight, I would really like to see what problems they've had with their ordinance, if any, and learn from that if we can be as restrictive as they are. So that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I generally agree with these directions and recommendations from council and staff. And I'll just reiterate, like Councilmember Hedges, I agree that we should err on the side of developing as streamlined and objective standards as possible. That I really appreciated Deputy Mayor's idea about requiring the applicant to do informed delivery notice, or even the notice of notice. I like that one. And I'm open to being more flexible on number six and potentially increasing the separation. However, if there's a trade-off and potential of that encroaching on the right-of-way and creating opportunities for more pole installation, then I think that would, that would be a downside that I don't, I don't think we should consider, because it runs contrary to our other stated objectives, like having a walkable and safe pedestrian experience. And I would like to hear from my council colleagues, you know, that point about consolidating the definition of residential. Are we all in agreement about that? Great. I think, and then, I believe we, this is sort of already touched on, but the point about... And then, I believe this is sort of already touched on, but the point about reviewing the recertification and certification process, I think making that, or at least making that something that we explore would be valuable as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Okay. I'll try to go through these quickly. For number one, yes. For number two, definition and clarity. Always more definition is important, so we should move forward with that, yes. Number three, appeal process. I would be for extending the appeal process, provided we can do it within the shot clock window. I'd also, as I mentioned, push for some sort of, you know, way to validate. Informed delivery should add no extra postage cost, whether it be standard or first-class mail. And that's not a huge deal for them to do that. And that would give them also the ability to say, yeah, we actually mailed it out on time, and we know that it got to their house on this day. So I would move forward with that. Number four, yes to being multilingual. Very important. Also, it... The more notice we can give people, the more hours we can do, the better, and we should be doing that. Number five, yes for tightening clarifications. Number six, required facility separation. Again, as Councilmember Hedges said, I think the more we can have it legally be separated, the better. Number seven, post-construction, yes. I want to make sure we're addressing the concerns of the RF frequencies and would like to see, obviously, maybe they can't check every one, but we would like to have them show that they're doing spot checking on a yearly basis of all their installations. Eight, yes for more poll options. Anything we can do to get it away from the bedroom, I think that was something Councilmember Lorraine said, which was a great idea. Thank you, Adam. Nine, city internal review process, yes. Number 10, yes. 11, yes. 12, yes. And 13, yes. The only other thoughts were to make sure that we are reviewing other cities that have tighter measures, best practices, and that, as Christina said, that we're learning from the best practices and procedures of what challenges people are finding and addressing those. And then, as a separate thing, it would be interesting to look at some of the larger multifamily units, like Akiku Crossing, for example, to see if we could work with the providers to provide Wi-Fi for the unit so that they wouldn't have to have a tower over their unit as is. So that's all the comments I have. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thanks.
May I have one more thing?
Yes.
Just one.
I just, I wanted to ask council... First, I want to appreciate Councilmember Lee bringing up, sort of asking about the additional thing about consolidating. I appreciate Deputy Mayor asking about making sure we're reaching out to other cities for their models, as was discussed before. I'm in complete agreement. I wanted to add one more thing and ask the council, because when I asked Jay about, you know, some of the other suggestions about, you know, considering residential areas as being more restrictive, putting more language in, you mentioned number 12 could potentially touch on that. I think just to make it clear, I wanted to ask other council members if they were interested in exploring that as part of what we're discussing tonight, with the idea that, you know, we might be looking into language that, you know, tries to make residential areas, you know, not just the lowest on the gradient, but, you know, a specifically restricted area, unless it is found to be preempting just as an exploration as we look into next steps.
I think that is...
Yes.
Comments? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I think what I'm hearing from everyone is that we're in agreement, that we want to start from a conservative foundation, and that protecting our community is the most important thing. And that you have gone into great detail, and that's fantastic, but we are at the beginning of developing a policy. But that policy really needs to be based on being as conservative and restrictive as we can be, realizing that there are legal restrictions we cannot go beyond, and obviously being cognizant of our financial obligations. But at every point in developing the policy and the regulations, that we should be looking and saying, have we asked all the questions? Can we do any more? Are there other examples from other cities? And I've heard Encinitas, time after time after time, again. I personally have not read that code 100%, but I trust a lot of our staff already has. And so I would look at that and other cities as a, why did they do it this way? And as the city attorney also mentioned, speaking to them and the city manager and Assistant City Manager, really having the in-depth conversations, because you will know much more than we will how to make something work on a day-to-day basis. But really, starting from that foundation of being as restrictive as we can be, because we all want 5G. We have to... We can't live without it, but we know that we're here for our community, and we want our community to live first and foremost. A couple other things that weren't mentioned, I really think the idea within fiscal responsibility and what we can recoup of figuring out when we use an outside consultant to go and do things to speed up our return, or to speed up our review, and also to provide expertise that we can't possibly imagine that you should have, that that would be something that would be really helpful. And I think doing a lot, doing regular reviews. I personally, I know some of us have said that we would be okay with having a hearing officer as an option. I would want to reserve that right now, because I think this is such an area of, we don't know what we don't know, that I would want to hold on to that authority and see how it works. And then, if it's just not feasible, come back to us and say, you're giving us two objectives: to be fast and to be thorough. But I would not want to just give it away without going through and seeing... So I would prefer to hold on to that authority right now. And then, just one small thing.
Real quickly, Mayor. The authority would be at the SIC, is that what you were meaning? Not the council?
Yeah, exactly. Yes, thank you for that clarification. And then, there was one question that one of our public commentators asked about, is there just someplace where we can call to get the information? I think that's just a simple, or someplace to look on the website for everything you want to know about any of this, whether it's background information as opposed to individual applications or polls. I think that would be very helpful, because what we want to give our residents is information so they're informed and not scared. So, thank you very much. Any other comments before?
Mayor, can you go through the questions real quick for us?
Oh, sure. So, let's see. Yes, we want to comply with state mandated batch processing rules. Yes, absolutely, explore objective design standards. I guess the one question I would say is if there are areas where you find not being so objective is really important, that you find those exceptions and bring them back to us. Let's see. I think I talked about, I would prefer not to do hearing officers in the beginning, but would be open if there was, we came up, because the ultimate, we want to give people as much time to appeal. And all the discussion that we had about mail and informed consent, yes. On-site notices, more visible, more languages, absolutely. Revising the design standards, I think everyone agrees to be more specific. Required, I would like to look at expanding the existing 250-foot separation requirements. Post-construction, if an annual radio frequency report is not possible, what is possible to get at the objective, which is, how is... You said it was going to do this, what is it actually doing? And I think that's the underlying need. So you tell us what's the way to do it. Let's see, poll options. I think I agree with my council members, looking at options that would get them out of residential areas. I agree with combining multifamily and residential, and looking at how do we, as Councilmember Lorraine said, really try and focus, not just putting residential at the bottom, because that's always the way it's been, but where should it be? I absolutely think city internal review process, using third-party experts when we think that would help with technical reviews, installation standards. Yeah, conformance to other regulations. Obviously, we want to be as conforming as possible, but if there's something that just conforming will bring up real health issues, then I'd want you to come back and tell us about it. Application requirement, I think in general, yes, everything you're saying, but I would want it to be as specific, and as I think the outside counsel may said, ask all the questions we possibly can upfront, because you can do it upfront, but you can't do it after, as I've heard. And I think that was a comment made over Zoom. But I'd want to be really focused on expanding number 12. And I'd be interested in applying, adopting a fee to recover costs, but I would make the, if it's a resident appealing, I want to make that appeal fee just as minimal, if nonexistent, as possible, because this is, you know, this is a matter of family and health. But I want to be, you know, sensitive to the cost recovery, that we also don't go bankrupt in the process of doing this. So did you get what you needed, city manager?
I did. Thank you very much.
From all of us? Okay. Thank you very much for an outstanding presentation, and thank you to the team for going through months of work. And I'd like to thank all of our community and industry partners who have been so engaged in this. This is the beginning of the process, not the end, so get lots of sleep. We want you to stay engaged, and we really thank you for the input. We are here for the community. And we are going to take a 10-minute break.
10 minutes. Thank you.
Okay.